Hello. Today is July 10th. This is the regular meeting of the Beppo Planning Board. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to declare quorum. I do have an opening statement. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Beppo Planning Board. Today is Wednesday, July 10th, 2024. This meeting is scheduled for 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. We would need a majority vote of the planning board to go beyond 8 o'clock. With that in mind, we have three items on the agenda to consider this evening. Under new business, we will begin to consider one determination of applicability, a site plan amendment, and a six lot subdivision application. Before we proceed, I'd like to remind everyone that all questions need to vote. So, does everyone have time to review the minutes?
We'll make a motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes from June 26.
Second?
All in favor? I cannot vote. How about the site walk on June 4th?
We have a quorum this time that we didn't.
No, I can't vote. But there's, is it four?
No, we had one, two, three, four. We had five, six there, and we have four here.
I think we're fine. Good, thank you. What are you saying, we don't have?
No, we do, but we asked last time to fix the names.
Oh, it's all good.
Nope.
June.
Oh, I did update it, but yesterday I didn't print it.
So, on the site walk, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
I will make the motion to accept the minutes noting the correction to June's name.
June 4th.
For June 4th, thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
I'm saying.
Okay. Do we have any new communication? Emma, but.
I don't know.
I don't think so. I think we're good. All right. Let's go right to the determination of applicability for the farmer's market?
Yeah.
What I'm calling it.
I know, I don't know what it's called. Essentially, it's a farmer's market, just to have vendors on our property. I initially thought Sunday night, but after exploring it a little more, it seems like the industry is more open to Tuesday night. But the same hours, four to eight, being at most by vendors, I don't, we could possibly be more than that, and that might be stretching it, honestly. So, probably about four vendors can come onto the site and sell their, taking their goods, trying to generate something on an off night.
Right, so just, just an extension of the farmer's market?
Yes.
Sort of. Are you doing any food trucks or?
No food trucks. It would be tables. And farmer's market, I don't know if that's what all-inclusive that is, but I know one of the vendors that I've talked to, they can have goods, they have baked goods, that kind of idea. So, food items, but people who have some level of license and my understanding is that in order to sell on our property, they would need something like a big trailer, a mobile big trailer's license.
So, we're just determining applicability for this. I definitely have my opinion about that. How's? Okay, I'll just go. I think that it's a farmer's market, it sounds like. I don't think it should be going through the planning board. But thank you for bringing it to us. I know that.
That's why I was advised to do that, to bring it.
I mean, unfortunately, applicability has to go through the planning board. So, we do have to discuss it, Jim. You look like you have something.
Just, I'm just without taking the time to look, because I can't remember. I mean, technically, it could be wrong. If I remember right, technically, a farmer's market is it's chrome food, not pre big foods and stuff. I don't have an issue. I just.
Do you ever go to a farmer's market, Jim?
No, I don't. That's why I don't remember.
Well, it has baked goods.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, and they have to have a license of some sort from the state, I understand, you know, to be able to produce these things.
So, Lori? I think it doesn't require any further review by the planning board. And to me, it's no different than the BAM market that was at Kilkirk the other day. We don't regulate that. So, that's my thing. No further action.
Sue? I agree. I mean, I think they're, they're definitely gonna make sure that people that are there are licensed, because the last thing they want to do is have.
Be liable for.
Yeah, be liable for them. So, but yeah, a farmer's market, we don't, we don't regulate anything that goes on Saturday morning.
You just sell an agricultural product, right?
Baked goods, it would be different vendors, but yes, that's essentially what it would be.
Because it's not applicable. This chapter, site plan, does not tell it.
Right, right. Well, are we ready to?
Question just for curiosity. Is it open on Tuesdays?
Not now. I did pop up this last Tuesday with tacos, trying to feel out if there was enough people in town to even do a Tuesday night, and there was. And maybe, and it's meant to be like a, an abbreviated series. I won't be doing this year round. It would be likely the summer when we have to put it on it and things like that.
This would be a question for the OCI. In a situation like this, how does Beppo being a food store in town apply to trying to regulate something like that?
I don't, I don't think it's.
It doesn't, yeah.
I don't, I don't. My only thing, my reason of just asking if they were open on Tuesdays was by not, if they were open already, it could increase parking and traffic. But they're not, so they're adding it as a regular night. I don't, I don't see it.
And they're so busy.
Yeah, I don't see it.
We don't regulate it anyway.
Right. Yeah, I don't see.
I don't see how it could bring more traffic in at night when they're open.
Right, that's what, that's what I'm saying. No, that's, that's why I asked if it was. If it, if it was, I don't know, a busy time, if it was a Saturday morning, then it could be a little trickier for them. I don't see it, no.
Yeah. Well, let's, maybe we should have a motion just for the record?
Yep.
Someone?
I'll make a motion that a planned market on the property of Union Eats does not require review as it's consistent with other farmer's market type events that are happening.
Second?
All in favor? Awesome.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Good luck. Look forward to seeing you Tuesday.
I like the idea of talking.
If it's our question, don't be a no to it.
Just so, it's been a year, someone.
I like the idea of talking.
I'm thinking of all kinds of things I'd like to see them. Okay. Next, we have a site plan amendment. Matt 28, lot 23 in West Beppo. Are you the gentleman or yes? And you are, there was previously a store there. And now you're gonna add a redemption center to it, but not a store?
Yeah, it's just gonna be the redemption center itself.
Okay. So, we're gonna, we're looking at this as an amendment to the site plan?
How is it an amendment to the first plan when there was a redemption center there anyway?
Taking the store out?
No, it wasn't.
I need your comment. So, the original actual site plan listed as a restaurant and store. It did not list the redemption center. So, it was long enough ago. We are unsure if it ever went through site plan for a redemption center. There's no record on it if there was, or if it did.
I have a question about this one. How long does a business need to be closed for?
We don't have a.
We're working on that.
We don't have that yet, okay. The other thing, when I was looking at this, I thought it could, because you have living on that property, right? That's your home.
Yeah, yeah. Well, there's, actually, there's an apartment upstairs, and then the business is down.
Do you live there, though?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
We decided that it would be, we suggested it would be better for them to come, because if they want to have an employee, they can't do it.
Oh, okay. You knew where I was going.
Yeah, their trips are limited a lot more for home business too than if it's
Okay.
site plan amendment.
Okay. What happens when I miss meetings? All right, then. So, I mean, I don't know if there's much to say. You want to open a redemption center. Is it in the building behind it?
Yes, it's in the barn where it previously was.
Only one building.
There's one building there?
Well, these are two of them.
I see, yeah.
But there's only.
They're, they're all attached.
They're all attached.
Oh, okay.
There's only one building.
All right.
And I'm a little confused about the warranty D connection to the, to.
So, you purchased this in 2005?
That's correct.
Oh, this is cars. I thought that.
Do we have a word detail on all that, all that parking?
This is, it has 11 spots.
Yeah, it is.
This is hard.
It just, it just seems. How, how are those gonna be pulled in, right?
They're gonna be pulled straight in.
Okay.
Because if you want to, if you want to come, it wouldn't be the amount of spaces that are there.
What's, what's the distance from the building to the, to the road? I mean, I just wanted to make sure there's enough. A 20-foot truck comes in here.
Oh, yeah, it's a funny room. There's gotta be 50 feet, 60 feet.
The road from the house?
Depends upon which, where he comes in for it. If he comes in on the west Beppo side, I'm not sure if you've got room for a 50-foot truck. But if he comes in on the Route 2 side, there's no problem.
He pulls in, because I drive dump truck. If he pulls in straight in there, there's, there's more monopoly.
Yeah, if he, if he pulls straight parallel with.
Parallel with the road.
With the road, but I'm, I'm thinking 20-foot pickup truck maybe in for a particular, on flat roads. That's what I couldn't remember.
Yeah, yeah.
I haven't been to a redemption center in a long time, but I remember going to the one in Wheeler's Bed, and there was never more, I mean, three cars there would be a lot.
I mean, would you stop and just drop off?
It depends on where you go.
That's true.
You can't tell.
I mean, my question is, are you gonna be able to contain all the operations in the property, part of the property? Because, I mean, the one thing that would create, I think, some concern is if, you know, bags of stuff was outside and creeping.
Oh, no, no. Because there's actually a bay attached to that barn.
Yeah, I'm seeing.
Which is also gonna be used.
Okay.
For inventory and for holding areas.
Is anybody from the, near butter setting?
And on the traffic getting problems, I mean, if there is an abundance of people, we do have to front pack them up as well.
Yeah, I see.
Which is where this is gonna go before we go. There's actually two packings.
Because we do have a standard for parking for a redemption center.
Yeah, it would be in the findings of fact that there is one. I think we did it as retail space.
Yeah, it'd be retail, it'd be no different.
I mean, and it was previously approved as a 21-seat restaurant. We didn't figure out parking for that. We just did, did it off the square footage.
Yeah, but we got one, I got one there a time before, when it was a store, so.
I'm familiar, of course, as we all are, with the property. I personally don't have, I think my biggest concern would be parking. And I don't have a problem. I know where you're talking about this. I don't have a problem with the parking here. Is anyone else?
I don't see the colors.
I don't either, too.
Oh, wow. Oh, so there's a lot more. There's 11. Oh, wow.
If you count, if you count these five, there are 11 here.
And then five more on the other side.
This angle, there's plenty of room.
Those are the big trucks.
When do they pick up?
That, we're gonna work out with the shippers. Because right now, we're in the process of getting the permits from the place through the state. We have to have those in order to get the shippers in place.
I didn't get that color one. She's just sharing.
You can set it on a schedule, or you can be a will call on that. And my suggestion to the gentleman is to be a will call momentarily. That way, it doesn't be zoned up automatically.
Do you want colored, we're only gonna color ones.
I think it would be appropriate that we add a condition of approval that says all operations must be contained within the premises. Not meaning they just.
So, we don't have piles of stuff, right?
I know it's not your intention, but I think we should make it a condition of approval because that would create neighbor problems and help problems.
Lori, you're saying inside the building.
Yes, but contained in the premises, yeah.
Which that's always been done for various reasons. Because maybe if they come, they're not gonna wanna learn, you know, all that stuff out with the stuff they're for, and I can't view it. They have to be contained in the dry area, you know?
Okay, all right. Would you be okay with that condition?
Yeah, that's fine.
Definitely need one.
What?
Definitely need one.
Can you make a note of that, a condition of approval that all, all the product or contents of the bottles and stuff stay inside the building?
Well, we did the same thing for Haley's. So, we, yeah, we better remain consistent.
No outside doors.
Any other questions from the board? Any? I'd love to entertain a motion on this.
Well, I'll make a motion for standing.
Oh, yeah.
Second.
First, this is standing. All in favor of standing? And the application?
Yes, I'll make a motion that the application, the motion for this amendment is completed.
Second?
All in favor? And how about, you ready to do the findings of fact? I think we can do this by page. It's pretty straightforward. Okay, if everyone could take a look at page one. Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
You okay with that?
Yeah, I have a question. How do they do, how does cleaning and stuff? This stuff, this stuff doesn't get cleaned when it comes in, right?
Usually, the people who bring it in rinse them out of the.
They're pretty clean.
They had a problem because, and last time we did it. And it, not just us, but most of them. Is the people with, whoever in the household trash it, and at that point, they stopped accepting it. For that reason, you know, the sanitary reason.
Yep, I just can't remember what, what. What Wheeler's did. Did they spray it any time?
No, he didn't have water in there. He didn't clean the water.
That was just a question, side track. You not gonna change the doors or anything?
Not at this time, no. They're pretty heavy doors, so everything is taken open from the inside.
How's everybody with page two? On to page three. Groundwater, flood, freshwater. Storm, everything. Everyone go with page three?
Yep.
Page four?
Do you want me to make a note on D? Because it actually has.
Two.
Two. Front are jumbo streets with access. Are we okay with?
Are you saying because of access or because of parking, Jim?
I don't know.
Because the parking is under 19B.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's great. I just, I guess I'm just asking, is under the reason?
We might add to that reason. Access to location is existing on two streets. Because you're right, there is two streets and there are two accesses.
It does, it says on roads and streets on the previous page. That, that is noted. Pull it back to number 10.
Or which one?
Number 10.
Yeah, Route 2 in Flat Road Street.
Yeah, it does say that. But we can just say it is access on, on B on the next page. Access from Route 2 or from the Flat Road. Add that in, it's no big deal. 13, additional improvements, archaeological, historic buildings.
We wanna add anything for reason, additional improvements?
What do you mean?
None required.
Oh, okay.
It has something. Lighting, we could look upstairs.
They're suggesting on their application that they're using the existing lighting.
Right.
I can't imagine a redemption center operates, you know, in hours where there's, it's dark.
No. No, there's plenty of light.
Sounds good.
I have to see my photos back at nine o'clock.
This time, 13, additional improvements. Can, can you jot in there, none required? Thank you. I don't know. Feels like it should be a historic building.
A lot of history, that's for sure.
All right, so let's go to page six.
You're not gonna do any changing outside, or is that?
No. Not at this time. We're just using it for the repairs.
Oh, yeah.
Especially the older buildings, yeah, right?
2500 square feet.
Wow. Is that the size of the redemption part? 2,500 square feet?
Yes.
That represents a lot.
That's a lot of bottles. Wow, wow, wow.
Weekend there's air.
Funny, because, believe it or not, the chicken coop used to be in the barn. There was a, there was a big apricot. That's where I always kept the inventory for the re-downt. And then there was a cattle stall in the other part, in the back end of the bay.
So.
Lots of history.
The only, the only thing, like, make, on, on the parking thing, we're putting in for, or you've got 16, parking for 16 vehicles.
Yep.
Right.
Your two are gonna take up that, the two for the apartment are gonna take up that.
They live there, in the apartment.
It still takes it away from what's.
No, two, not four.
Yeah, it only takes two away.
Although, isn't, I thought there was a second apartment, because your place.
Yeah, we live upstairs.
Others, an additional apartment upstairs?
Yeah, that's where we are.
No, it's just one big apartment up there.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, just you guys up there. I was thinking, I was thinking there was a second one, okay.
Because on here, it says parking circulation, commercial space, nine spaces required. Applicability provided 11, but on that color, probably we looked at it, provided 16. Or the five overflow.
Well, 11 in five, 11 on the side, five in the front.
Right, well, so we have plenty. Do we, do we need to change that reason to 16, though, for the record? Or just say additional five overflow? Okay.
If you do that, then how does that affect?
If there was a concern about that, as far as my vehicles go, on the other side of the front parking lot, I could pull my cars down and off to the side, and ignore it in the fence.
Okay.
There should be plenty of space.
There's plenty of space.
No, I just don't, I didn't want it to take away from, you know, his parking.
Yeah, yeah.
If I make sense of what I'm trying to say?
Yeah. I'm always thinking of the record, because we always pounded that into. So, so down the road, if in a year, you wanted to do something else, we already have enough parking, and it shows it on the findings of fact, so we don't have to say, we're gonna scrounge up a couple more spots.
I would change that, though, to just provided 16.
Yeah.
Because I think that's around. Truly where you're at.
Just, that just will protect you down the road if you expand or do something else. So, that's something else we don't have to address. Does everyone agree with that?
Mm-hmm.
On page, on page six, how about page seven?
Might change the word any to undue.
Where's that? Oh, on, any, oh, yeah. Not cause any noise. I haven't seen those guys checking those.
You're gonna have trucks, you're gonna have trucks in there that aren't gonna shut down.
Right, yeah. Because any noise, any cause undue, you think, is?
I would say any undue noise.
Yeah.
Had to work in there.
You got that, Emma?
Yep.
Oh, oh, the next page? Oh, okay. All right.
We'll give off orders.
Yeah.
Do we need to make a motion to use letter at noon?
Do what?
Do what? Oh, the fire chief's letter.
Do we need to?
Redad it.
Yeah.
Redad it?
Do you want to go back to that, or do you?
No, it's, it's there.
Oh.
It's probably, probably. 526. I don't recall.
It was two.
Well, it has the lot and the address, so.
Okay, do we, did we all get that?
Yep.
Yes, okay.
So, it's, was, it's part of the packet, is it not?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
So, then we don't have to read it into the record. This is part of it. Do you have to? To acknowledge it and just put, I would put, Matt and fire chief has determined that the apartment can adequately service the area and the property.
How many, how many, how many handicap supplies are needed?
Does, do we need? Do we need any handicap on that?
Well, it's under special regulations.
But that has to do with size.
I mean, I don't think you're marking out spots.
Yeah, so it should be. Is the entrance all at grade?
With that?
Is the entrance, if, if I was a customer coming in to drop off my redemption, is it all at grade from the parking area?
Um, the parking lot is graded by the, uh...
No, I meant, is it all flat?
The entrance.
Do you have to go up a stair or anything?
You have to go up the stairs.
Onto the loading dock, that's how you're setting it up?
There's three stairs.
Three stairs?
To get into the building, so if I'm coming in with bottles, I have to go up three stairs.
Could we do something like this? Could we say anyone who's handicapped that can't do the three stairs could call ahead and...
Yeah, we could, we could accommodate.
And you would pick them out from the car?
Yeah, we could accommodate because we used to do that with a lot of our customers. Uh, because when we stopped the insurance and that wasn't a requirement on their end because, because of the region.
Okay.
Oh, that...
Wanna make that?
Which one do you want now?
Well...
Well, the, the...
Special regulations.
Special regulations.
That's about parking and we've been talking about access.
Right.
For me, is there any standard for this?
I don't think there's a standard.
For this kind of accommodation to be handicapped accessible?
I don't think there's a standard, um, it does discuss parking, I mean, you could always, uh, ask that there be a handicap parking sign put on one of the spots towards the entrance.
Alright.
But other than that, I don't think there's.
Okay, what, can we make that a condition of approval?
Um, that one of the...
One spot, the handicap accessible.
Be noted as handicapped accessible.
Right. And then should we still ask?
I, I, I think so.
Of the...
Because, because of the EDA stuff, the federal EDA stuff. You know, we're not, on the other hand, we're not bringing that up like we should on a regular basis.
Well, there's, there's a size requirement, there's a size limitation for that and I...
I don't know what it is.
I don't either.
Yeah, unfortunately, I didn't know.
And I don't wanna open up one, but it doesn't need to be, but on the other hand.
And you're, uh, somewhere, I'd like to say that the applicant will...
Has agreed to offer ca- uh, um, assistance.
Yeah, assistance, yeah.
Car side assistance, if necessary.
Yeah, well, what that is, 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 is...
Permission.
Acceptance at the end.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Conditions.
Yeah.
As you just said.
Right. So we're gonna mark this standard, the fire chief is met based on the letter they get.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. There's two and a half. How about everything else on page eight? Doing good? Jim, good on page?
Yeah.
Page nine?
So we just have the two standards.
Right.
Yep.
So we're gonna add two conditions of approval?
Correct.
Number four on wouldn't wait. How are you gonna work that?
Oh, the handicap sign?
What was the other one?
Yeah, the handicaps.
The all being kept inside.
All, but all operations will be enclosed in the premises. No outside storage.
And where are we putting that have curbside service?
That would be number five. The applicant has agreed to, uh, mark a spot as a, as handicapped parking and will offer car side assistance if required.
Okay, so, and where's the handicap sign condition go?
Under the...
About same.
Same one, okay.
Conditions of approval.
Did you get all that? Are we ready to, uh?
I will make a motion to approve the... I will make a motion to approve the, uh, safe plan amendment for the bottle redemption, Miss Jenny's B and C Redemption Center. With the added conditions, the two added conditions.
Second. All in favor? So what are we gonna sign, like this?
Maybe, yeah, what are the clauses?
You can sign the back of the colored one if you'd like.
Okay.
I have all the colored.
Oh, how about we attach, we put, we attach these two and we sign the back of one of those? We have room on the front.
It's just colored.
I know, but I like the colored.
Right.
But it's easy to sign on this one.
Whatever you like. What would you like?
I'd like both of them.
Sign?
No, we'll just staple them. Hey Fred, that's, uh, it's been a while since we've had a redemption center. Can I just give this back to Emma and attach it?
More ways than one.
Comes off a flat road and not used in front.
What we're gonna do is, cause we're gonna need every time.
That's really quite a story behind that.
There you go.
That was a school in Paul, they, that school had been there since I used to go to school right there. Down there, where they, where they, they were there like now, there used to be a children's school.
Really?
You went from first to third grade and then from there you went to the park.
Should be part of the historical society, so nobody remembers you. There you go, be careful, poor guy's gonna have to put him through it. Oh, really?
I remember one...
You're all set.
I re...
At his place?
Yeah, I remember.
Back in the fifties.
I remember from the early, early seventies, mid-seventies.
Good luck. Welcome to Hank's Day.
That far off. But yes, I was still at five years.
Thank you, Fred, we'll send you a packet, we'll get it together and get it to you, we know where you are. Yeah, you're up next.
Okay. Alright. Thank you, good luck. Oh, alright. Alright, we'll see you at the redemption center, sure. Good luck with everything.
Uh, well, it oughta go good, I mean, everybody's excited about it, um, with the, the travel all the way around, so.
Good.
It oughta go good. Thanks, bud.
Sorry, Miss Osley.
I had to attend a funeral, I was getting caught, but I had one of my employees come in.
Oh, good.
Don't be too offensive.
You're right. Okay, um, um, this is gonna come from a... Uh, yeah, Yellowstone, you know Yellowstone?
Rip?
Yeah. Doesn't he?
I only watched a little bit of it, it was a little...
That was a compliment. That was a compliment. Okay. So we have, you're a butter, Lucy.
I'm a butter.
You're a butter, so you're only, there's only a butter here tonight.
So there's two people that were here before, Lemieux, were they a butters or were they?
I don't know who they...
I, I believe that they were with her.
Oh, okay, that just made me think.
Way they acknowledge.
Are we opening a discussion of this?
Yes.
If anybody needs the plan, I brought extra coffee just in case, I know it's been a couple weeks since I was here last, so I brought extra coffee.
Did that guy, or?
Did he?
Mention the things we were talking about?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we talked about it right after the meeting and then briefed again the next morning in the office, so we, uh, hung up the speed. So just for, um, yeah, I guess a, a couple of, just really quick items, just kinda housekeeping things. When, so the plan that you have was showing this backland as being to be conveyed, um, that has since happened, so we, that was done last week and the deed got recorded on Monday, so this lot back here has been separated off from the front piece. Um, so I updated this plan that's here with the book and page number of that conveyance.
And that is access on Remalde.
Yep, that just gets access from Remalde and that's, this is the spot where we're gonna be building up on top of the hill there.
So you're, that's your...
Your home.
That's what we're gonna be doing there.
You're retaining that?
Yeah, we're retaining that, so I, I gave it over to my own personal name from the LLC. Um, and so I guess the only other thing that's different from, I guess, the printed plans that you have is the proposed location of the Cisferen that we met with the fire chief on and discussed, and I think you had an opportunity to look at it when you did the sidewalk and there'll be some discussion about that tonight, but, um, yeah, that's really the only other change, is just showing the location of where the system would go and then we updated this information based on the deed that had come out, so.
So this is the old one, right?
So this is still the old one?
He has new...
Yep, that's the original one that I submitted.
So that's just...
The only changes are those two things I talked about, but I'm happy to hand these out if you guys want to.
Well, we'll need to, if we approve it, we need to sign those. You're basically changing the book and page on that, right?
This is the, this is the draft.
This is the full packet.
Is there a new findings of that?
Do you not have it?
I have one and I know it's not ours, but we don't need, um...
I just, I just, I just, I just want, that's all I know with that. Yes, this is the updated one, but, yes, I would...
Which one?
It is, but she hasn't revealed the standing, aware that it needs to be located.
Cause we've already determined state.
The one that came in just now.
We'll go through that after and we'll get it. Well, do you wanna do a little bit of housekeeping, so we have, uh, we have finds, we have a standing and we have, did we find the application was complete?
No, because we usually do that after a sidewalk in case we ask for anything in addition and of course, I'll make a motion that the application has been found complete, the only question I have on that is, I, there's no updated letter from Mike Jodry, right, there's just been the one letter?
Yes.
Okay, I just can't, on my copy of it, that's...
I think it's, is it in the packet?
No, because, uh, it just says that they're planning to meet with him and that's now happened and reviewed, so I can't remember what...
The letter said that he was required a ten thousand gallons.
So, on, on that note, I know that we...
Well, we have to act on this motion.
I gotta act.
Oh, yeah, that's first.
Okay.
A second.
All in favor of the application being complete?
Okay, thank you.
Alright. Jimmy, you have a question?
You guys had said you were going to go, I know Chief said ten thousand, you guys said you were gonna go to twenty thousand?
So, what I'm likely gonna do now is, he, he said ten thousand minimum. The most efficient tank size that we usually put in is, is, um, seventy-five hundred gallons, so we'll prob, so it'll be fifteen thousand that we'll put in, off of that, so, he just said he wanted ten thousand, but for practical purposes, I'm most likely gonna put in fifteen.
Well, we have to note that.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm asking.
Well, that, that's why I said on there, minimum ten thousand, I think if I decide to put in fifteen, then that would be okay.
Okay, well, part of the problem happens is when nobody can remember, because we haven't noted it, you come back in and you decide something needs to be amended on this because of how things are occurring.
Yep.
And, you know, so I would, Madam Chairman, suggest that we, um, require as a condition of approval, because he's gonna do the ten thousand minimum, that he provide a letter that can be put with the record if he goes above ten thousand, so we have clear documentation about what's there.
What's there.
So you just want a letter stating what is, what the...
What's actually there.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we'll do, yeah, the kind of an as-built letter that'll also include things like testing and making sure that it's operational and he's accepted it and all of that.
We need that documentation in, with the record.
The second part of that, how are we doing accessing that?
Yep.
Because, and, and the reason I'm asking that is because the bottom of that turns into a disaster in the winter. It, and if heavy rains, the road washes out all the time. Trying to back a truck up there, if it's not plowed out with paint, it's gonna be a disaster.
And this is the Remalde Road?
Yeah, because you can't, this is where the system, because you can't, you have to bring a truck up.
Well, that's why I asked how, how the truck is gonna turn around, so I don't think you're gonna back a truck up there, you're gonna drive it up there. If you drive a truck up there, you gotta have some area where you can turn around on that road, so you're gonna have to provide that for that system. Yep, um, I think, and that needs to be a condition of approval when you do that.
Yep.
Did you show the location of the, it was a hammerhead turnaround outside?
No, it's just...
No, basically we have a location, because what we talked about, so we, we, I met with the chief and we, in the code's office and I brought this plan and I showed him, you know, some options as to where we could go and the thinking was is that he would either, you know, in this time of year, he would back up the, the road and if it was winter time and it wasn't conducive to back, you know, he would have to pull up and then back out to leave. We do have some plans to improve Remalde Road, cause I don't, I don't wanna drive down this intersection for our house. So, but I have to work with the town on that, cause it's an public road, so I can't, I can't just go in and start rebuilding the road, so that, that's my next step is, as, before I build here, I'm gonna work with the town to get permission to fix this intersection and put in ditches and clear it wider and we're, we're gonna do all that as part of the Cisferen construction. But, you know, the, the chief felt comfortable and he could use it the way it is, but we're gonna make it better.
Does his letter reflect that, because I couldn't find my copy of the letter.
The other, the other part of that is...
He required the sister, but he did sit with him in our office and we'll get the plan.
But I mean, we, we have anything in writing from Chief Jodry that says, I feel comfortable managing with the current condition of Remalde in case, you know, to, uh, mobilize my equipment and, um, because that's important.
The, the other part of that is, that road is one truck with, one car. So you drive, we're in there trying to pump water out of there for fifteen minutes per truck and usually you try to have another one sitting there ready to go. Or you've got one, and actually what happens is, in reality, you've got one truck that's sitting there doing pumping, filling... Or you've got one, and actually what happens is, in reality, you've got one truck that's sitting there doing pumping, filling the other trucks.
Look.
And, so nobody's, nobody above that is gonna be able to get in and out of the road.
Do we, well, Sherry's found the Chief Jodry.
And the other thing is, we can't really override Chief, I mean.
Yeah, he, yeah. He, he said it was okay.
We could add to it.
Let me, let me read it, see, everyone's struggling to find it. Um, it's provided to you in accordance with the site plan review ordinance. Uh, the fire chief shall review all plans and consider the availability of fire hydrants and/or fire cisterns or other provisions for fire protection services to include the accessibility of the rope of fire equipment. The development shall meet the requirements of the fire chief. The Bethel Fire Department provides service to the cistern and has reviewed the plans with no other requirements.
So, no more improvement.
But it doesn't even say anything about the cistern.
He didn't even say the minimum ten.
He mentions the cistern saying that it's a consideration, so.
Well, uh, I think as, I think one of the things we will have to do is get Chief Jodry to update that letter, he's requ. Is it the ordinance that requires the ten thousand cistern, uh, yeah?
We don't have an ordinance, um.
Mike's requiring it, because that's the standard.
Yes, Mike sat down in our office and met with the plans, um, and they discussed cisterns and fire ponds which they're trying to move away from.
Mm-huh.
Um, and, um.
I don't, I don't know if that's the same one, I always think that might be different.
Are you reading the one for Rinaldi?
Oh, this is the same one, I think.
No, that last sentence talks about the ten thousand gallons, so I think.
Oh, no, no, so, okay.
So, am I playing?
No, I wonder if she's looking at a different one.
What's the date of that?
That's the date, the date is June eighteenth, is yours?
This is July third.
Okay.
So.
And it says Rinaldi Road?
That's the same, yeah.
No, give me the West Bethel one.
Oh, is that West Bethel?
Yes.
Oh, I was happy to find it, thank you. All right, so then, that letter exists.
This letter exists and I, and I sat down with Pam Miles with this plan before he wrote the letter, so, so he reviewed this plan.
No, we were having it in our office, that's how we make the packets, there's already one online as well.
I have not, I don't know where mine is either, but like I said.
I, I don't, I've never seen one, but. I, I would feel comfortable if we had Harper and we just verified that how we're gonna do accessing and stuff, but that's my concern.
Can, can we create a condition of approval for Jodry?
Well, we can create a condition.
Um, just say that.
Well, okay, yeah.
With further access detail, because this is.
Well.
I'd be willing, yeah, I mean.
We don't wanna drag this out.
Is the chance that it's gonna get approved tonight?
Yeah.
Right, I would too, so if that, yeah, I just, I, I don't.
Mike, there's a memo there, it's very clear what he's requiring the minimum and we just talked about the fact.
Well, we don't have that.
It, but, I mean, it's.
It was in your packet.
It had to.
It had to be, but I just can't find it.
None of us can find it.
Hold on.
It came in after the packets, but I think it's part of.
It would've been right into the record then.
It was right into the record. It was right into the record, so what we're requiring.
What are your minutes, are they in your minutes that you approved earlier?
What we're requiring is that the applicant, uh, provide a letter for the file if he deviates from the ten thousand gallon cistern and, uh, clearly the dot, the, any improvements to Rinaldi are with the.
You found it in the.
I know, new business, it says, Jim Bennett mentioned to have
Yeah.
letter from Bethel Fire Chief, read into the records, sued and seconded, all were in favor.
Yep. So, where is that?
Action on applications.
That was.
So, it's in the file, we just don't have it as we read it.
Yes, that's what I was, that's what I was just gonna say.
Okay.
So, the only, the only copy she has.
Mm-huh.
That, it says what we're asking here.
So, the other issue that came up at the site, um, walk was about the issues of maintenance of Remaldi. Uh, because we were worried about the cistern and access and getting it plowed in the winter and right now, the, um, there's, there doesn't seem to be anything in writing, apparently, we were informed by staff that the road in the winter is plowed by somebody else who has a house way up on Remaldi and, um, but, uh, we can't rely on the goodwill of, um, somebody who says, okay, I'm always gonna plow it.
Right, yeah.
Uh, so, I, I was asking our chair after the site walk, you know, how do we deal with that, because we need something that, where you, and I would put it as another condition of approval, is that you will be held responsible for maintaining winter maintenance at least up to the cistern.
Yep.
Or, or, um, it's.
Well, that's a good question, we don't.
No, the guy, hold your.
It's a, it's a.
Hundred fifty feet.
Oh, hundred fifty, hundred fifty feet.
And, 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 and the, um, so, I just feel like you have to, we have to apply responsibility to you because we can't rely on Mr. Whoever.
Is that ever gonna be a town winter road?
They are not accepting.
Um, so I can tell you that I believe, um, after meeting with Scott and Dustin, um, I think Taylor Smith Road as well as, was the other one Grandview that we had discussed? Was a non-winter maintained town road at one point, um, and there was something decided, the town has a couple of choices, they could.
And that's.
It's like swamps or mill.
Yeah, the, the town could make decisions on that, but I believe like those two roads used to be non-maintained roads, the town made the decision to maintain them in the winter if they were brought up to the best, I believe, condition.
Taylor, Taylor Smith got an exchange.
Okay.
And the other one was the upper part of the bomb. How, the first and second.
I mean, yes, the town could give the road to people who live on it, or the town could make a decision to maintain it in the winter, that would be the decision of.
But we can't deal with that now, so.
Yeah, that would be the town's big thing.
Well, my, my other concern is the amount of water that comes down there washes gravel onto pavement every time it rains.
But, I mean, we're not, that's not our, that's.
Well, it affects accessing the cistern.
The town does maintain the road, when the road washes out, the town does, they maintain it, they don't plow it, they don't sand it out.
So, what we need is a road maintenance agreement from you for those town times of the year that it's not, as a condition of approval, just a road maintenance agreement to the cistern.
Yeah, I don't wanna do that.
And I have a feeling down the road, we're gonna revisit this when you, maybe when you do something different with Rinaldi, would you update it or?
Yeah, we're gonna have a discussion with the town and, and we have to wait and see what, how much improvements are we talking about, if I, if it's a hundred percent rebuild, it's gonna really get expensive.
Right.
You know, we'll, we'll see, but.
Right.
But.
But just some kind of a main, we need a maintenance agreement, it's also a hot button issue in real estate right now.
Sure.
So, just access to the, these lots, I know it's just the cistern in this case, but, um, so anyone financing a home, let's say, in one of your new lots, might need that anyway. So, it's.
So, would it be snow removal or just maintenance other than what the town provides?
That's a better way to say it, so.
Right, the town won't plow it, so it's gonna be snow removal.
But they will re.
Is it, this is a long piece of.
You can just call it like sort of a year-round access and that, like, we either plow it or whatever, I mean, it's.
Yeah, sufficient to allow for water protection.
The town's, it maintains maintaining as far as like the gravel, but they're not going in there and ditching it and doing all that.
No, they're doing that.
Are they?
Yeah.
Okay.
If it needs it, then they'll, they'll grade it and.
Okay.
So, that would be condition number two.
And I'm sure Scott would be responsive to that, to there being access to a cistern as well.
Yeah.
I think that.
I'm just, my, my biggest concern was with, with that is, and I know what Chief has said, but my two cents is that you gotta have a pump, a truck sits there pumping water out of it to fill the other trucks and now you have to have two trucks up there and there's no room, nobody can get by once a truck is there. The road is not white.
But.
If they're having a fire, there shouldn't be traffic coming down the hill.
Well, no, 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 because we could just be, a fire doesn't have to be up there to be using that cistern. Like, the one that, that burned at Bean's Corner, we had to drive halfway into town, we actually had to go almost into town to fill because the fire pond at Hastings or at, uh, yeah, Hastings jammed up.
What about tail of wood?
So, if there was a fire, let's say at the Abbott Farm, can they use, anyone can use that cistern?
Yeah, it's.
Okay.
Yeah.
I actually did know that, okay.
Yeah, we can, we can go to any place that we are. So, that's what, that's where my concern is, that it doesn't have to, the issue doesn't have to be here to turn around, shut these people down for a long period of time, either getting in or out.
My will.
It is what it is.
Well, because Mike Jodry, Mike Jodry has to take that to us.
I agree, I understand that, but that's.
The river's too far away.
That's why I said I understand his, but this is my two cents injecting.
Yeah. No.
Certainly as far as installation, we're gonna involve him and make sure that we're, what we're putting is clear expenses, so we'll put things to make sure gravel lift down there and culverts, I mean, that's not a big deal, the expenses and the tanks and all the, uh, excavation.
Well, you're dealing with two very reasonable, you're dealing with Scott Sumner and you're dealing with Mike, very reasonable guys.
Yeah.
Sherry, can we?
I'm not worried about it, I'm sure they'll.
Dustin, to just go over the stormwater control things you're doing at the lot, there's a lot of discussion at the site walk about that, I wanna make sure we're all hearing the same thing.
Sure. That's kinda helps to look at the other plan. Well, I'll start here, I mean, basically, topography on the site, it all comes downhill this way, so it's an option, Intervale Road is the low spot, everything drains this way. We're about five hundred feet from the river. So, we've, we've done a layout with some topography here just to give an idea that this is how the lots might be developed, depending on driveways or pixelations as far as exact house placement, this is where I think the houses would likely go. So, what we have is, um, we've got a culvert here, here, and here, so we've got three locations where water crosses the road. So, there's drainage ditches that kind of run down through the property, some more substantial and others, this one here is kind of the, one of the most substantial ones as well as this one through here, this one over here, kind of, it breaks down through a lot of different areas, so it's not as concentrated, that's why you get some wetlands along the, the road here. Kind of comes down and makes its way over and goes through this culvert. So, what we've done is we've designed the property lines to basically fall so that we're not interrupting those drainage courses with homes. We do have this one lot number two, which has a drainage course that runs through it, and this one's fairly substantial. So, we're putting adhesivement over that area, so nothing gets built in it and blocks that drainage. We've got, um, a larger culvert that we're proposing under this driveway at eighteen inches, because that's the size of the culvert that goes under the road here. And that's outside of the right of way, so even though D O P says there's fifteens, we can do a larger one if we're, you know, up, up the hill a little bit. So, you know, the houses are sit, sitting back so that, you know, the, we'll, we'll maintain some wooded area in and around the lots. We, we looked at the amount of impervious area on each lot, we put that in the stormwater manager report, I think it's about fifteen percent of total lot area, so we've got a lot of the lot that's gonna be either retained as woodland or grass area, so that'll help a lot with the absorption of the soils. The test pits that we dug on the site had, um, more than four feet down in most cases, the restrictive layers, so we've got some kind of deep soils with deeper groundwater. So, we're not in a saturated soil condition where we're gonna be producing a lot of runoff, so because of kind of the microtopography and the way the water kind of captures down into all these drainage ways, it really helps to absorb the water over a long area of the property versus it all going into like one drainage ditch. That's where you start to have issues with the roads and stuff, if you start funneling to all the one location, so the fact that we do have these multiple areas to cross the road and we're able to kind of spread this out over all the frontage and not, you know, if, if we were building a new road and intercepting the water and dumping it all in one spot, then we'd probably have to look at doing something more substantial. But in this case, when you, we spread it out over a long period, the soils coupled with the, the amount of, uh, retained woodland and vegetated area for the lawns.
So, if, I mean, are you allowing people to pave their driveways? Because that creates an impervious surface.
Yep, um, I mean, the, the pavement, um, what it does, if, if somebody were to choose to pave their driveway, we would like to keep it there as an option. It does allow them to kind of, you know, it, it, you're gonna have less sedimentation in the springtime and you're gonna have less impact as far as mudding and creating, you know, soil disturbance, the gravel areas, you know, and we all know in the springtime, if you get a rainstorm, it just washes it down the hill and it's so hard to retrieve and get it back, at least if, if they are paved. If people choose to do that, you do have more rapid flow.
But your stormwater plan contemplated the runoff that would be created if all, um, five of the new lots, there are five new ones, the
Right.
sixth one is existing one, were paved, you're.
Yep, yeah, yeah, whether it was paved or gravel, um, you, you actually have similar drainage characteristics as long as the gravel is good and compacted and it's not ratted up and everything. You have, the, the quickness that the water runs off of gravel versus pavement, when you're on a slope like this, is similar. If you're flat, then gravel tends to pot up and you're, you're gonna get less runoff because it's just gonna pool up in the areas.
We're, we're seeing with the rains we're getting now, we're seeing substantial runoff, erosion, dumping stuff in, I just have one news. The driveway.
Yeah.
Weird.
It's, it's.
Weird, it's normal now.
It's, it's the way this stuff's coming, so.
Yeah, these freak rainstorms, I mean, this is gone today.
Yeah, every day, definitely, but I have to say that my own experience with my own driveway is that if, which is highly compacted, it's not paved. It does flow like it would be paved, do you know what I mean? There's no, I don't have.
And it, and it depends on what was put down for material.
Oh, yeah, lots of, lots of substantial compacting. But, um, so, you know, I, I realize that, um, I guess what I'm concerned about is how do we prevent washouts on, um, Intervale Road? So, you know, which we've seen in other, I mean, sometimes, and I am not, you probably, you're in this business, I'm not, is the initial paving of a three of a certain amount, um, would that deter gravel washing down these driveways and making messes and I've seen that being done in the subplaces, in fact, we had a subdivision on Route Five where some of the initial entryway, I, I can't speak to how much.
Station that don't, not there when they, when they.
Yes, and then part of their driveway permit thing, this is what I was gonna go.
Like they paid the twenty billion or something like that.
Yes, I, I think in this case, being the novice, the, some requirement that there's be some initial paving would help create less of a problem.
You mean, pave the, the driveway entrance?
Yeah, driveway, gateway.
It's just an apron.
Just, and I, I think if we looked at the M D O T driveway permits, they may even have a standard.
Well.
Let's see what it says.
Boy, you're looking it up.
I'll, I'll tell you why I think, again, now we're talking like we're developers. Is usually in a development, they're not interested in paving even, I know what you're talking about, just the entrance, until after construction, because you're gonna have your, your excavators and stuff go in there.
Oh, yeah.
And then, and then Dustin doesn't wanna go in after every house is done and paved that little, is, is there any truth to that?
Yeah, but you could also, you could just, I mean, I could shift that burden on to the homeowner and just, it's a requirement
Yes.
that, that before certificate of occupancy, you have to page your neighbor.
We don't have those.
No certificate of occupancy in this town.
Okay.
We do have a certificate of compliance.
Huh?
We do have a certificate of compliance.
Okay.
Oh, we do?
We do?
Yeah.
That's why.
It involves a final plumbing inspection and a life safety inspection.
Yeah, but that's, that, that's not.
I know, but.
You can, you did apply, you did the plumbing.
So, if we, uh, indicated that, uh, the, uh, owners of the property, partners, development have to do that, I don't. So if we indicated that the owners of the property, public development have to do that, I don't.
Yeah, you say it's a requirement of the development of the lots that any driveways have a twenty-foot paving.
Is that usually, it's not in this.
Do you think that's, do you think that's viable?
Do you think that's helpful?
I know, I'm wondering, you don't want us making stuff up.
With the angles of the stuff, I can, like, excuse me, I can see that. A paving company is gonna come in, they're gonna wanna do, they would prefer to do all five at the same time.
But that may not happen, and that's not the way the one on Route Five was done.
But they're all built at the same time, and that, we know that's not gonna happen.
And maybe some of them, probably percentage of those are gonna pave anyway, so it might not be, it might be a non-issue. But I like your, I like your solution. Also, when you, when you cut a lot like this, and you're cutting out probably an acre, close to an acre, for your building envelope, when your driveway, you're opening that up, that dries out that property tremendously. That changes the water, it dries it out, it.
Why?
Courtney has something else.
On the, on the same.
Go ahead, Courtney.
My, I understand, like, DOT requests aprons being paved. My concern with that is DOT went out and marked the driveways and reviewed the plans.
And didn't require.
So I feel like if they thought it should be required, they would have made sure, I mean, it may be on the other ones, I didn't look that closely at them.
It doesn't.
But I feel like it's a DOT road, I mean, they go out and look at it, they, they make their suggestions. So my other concern is if you then say, it's a condition of approval, you have to pave twenty feet, is DOT gonna?
No, I don't think so.
I think DOT will.
We don't know.
I know what you're saying.
Like DOT reviewed it, they, they, that's their job.
Is it an overreach? Is that what you're saying?
Well, no, I just don't know if it's then going to cause another issue. I mean, they went and looked at it and said it didn't need it.
Yeah, but they also say that the signs aren't needed in places where we know there's.
But did the question arise, or do they ever ask for aprons to be paved?
They do sometimes.
They do.
They do?
I mean, all the commercial things, we approved.
Actually, I believe the daycare had to have.
Usually, if it goes commercial, if you have a driveway that serves five or more uses, it becomes a commercial driveway, they require a pay difference on those. So it's kind of, single-family homes, duplexes, they, they don't require it.
Well, are you comfortable with that condition?
I'm not opposed to doing it, I think it would be a good idea, because it would, it would track less gravel onto the road. Having a twenty-foot apron is about the length of a car, so it gives somebody a full car width to stop on pavement before they hit the road. It's good, I, I see it being a good idea, I'm not opposed to it.
But that's not consistent with other places in the town that have driveway going on to public roads.
Well, we're, I'm suggesting that because of the runoff, the way the land slopes, the runoff.
I can show you places that, that have the same type of topography that do not have that.
Yeah, but just because something was built a hundred years ago.
I, I think in this, this is just my.
Out there on the flat road comes down through, there's no, and that's not that old, that's true.
I just feel like in this case, it would be helpful. I totally respect anyone who disagrees with me, but I, in this case, it's, it would be a good idea. And we can't be consistent, because every piece of property is different.
I do think it's a good idea, and I think if I were building on one of these lots, I would either pave the driveway or at least pave an apron. It's up to you whether you wanna say that everybody has to do it.
I think if he was, if Dustin was grossly opposed to this concept, it would be.
On the, the same topic of this, we talked when we did the sidewalk and looking at the runoff and everything, my personal thought is, I think the fifteen-inch culverts are too small for the amount of water we're getting. And honestly, looking at, and looking at the culverts that are crossing the road and how they're all half-plugged up, eighteen's too small for those. You think, if you look at it, that all that water comes this way, plus renovate comes this way, and literally everything goes down to one eighteen-inch culvert that's plugged up. And I went down and pulled a bunch of stuff out. I'm just, I'm just concerned, if you create a choke point of a fifteen, it starts flowing over or starts washing out.
Yeah, we never were into this a lot, yeah, we were into this a lot, where we, where we start talking about, like, you know, sizing of colors and one of the different results. And I know there's some thought, I mean, into the engineering, when they talk about what culverts to put in. It's not always about sending all the water through as quick as possible, they're trying to manage the water in the ditch too. So if they, I, I think they look at it and they design it to a certain, like a fifty-year storm, so that these pipes are, because they actually wanted to fill up some and help manage the flows a little bit, because you're gonna get more water out of a bigger pipe. And the issue is, is that if, if each of these culverts just sends water through them very quickly, then you just have this compounded effort. At some point, you end up with something that is.
On the other side of the road.
So you end up all, you end up with these little micro check dams. So everywhere with a fifteen-inch culvert, it ponds up a little bit, those are little ponds that help to give that culvert downstream a little relief. Because if you, if you put two-foot culverts everywhere, water's gonna just fly through them. And then you're right, you're gonna have a culvert that can't keep up, and that one's gonna get washed out. And this gives you some room to kind of just manage your ditching.
And you know what, I don't wanna start undermining engineers, it'd be pretty dangerous. We've kind of already gone to the, we're really getting ahead of ourselves tonight, we're paving now. And I think that the engineers had to take all of this, they did all this work into consideration. And I hope that they.
Yes, and I, and I could have read it wrong, but I think I read in the, in the driveway cuts, that they recommended a minimum of fifteen. Or maybe it was on this plane that said, minimum of fifteen. But I, you know, I'm not an expert on it, that's why I asked. I would've thought, personally, I would've thought, what bigger culvert did, did that make sense, what you said?
Yeah, so, I mean, because when it says, like, this is the DOT permit, it says culvert size, it just says fifteen inches. It doesn't say at least a minimum. And if, they would require a bigger culvert if they wanted to. But they also take into account things like, because once we put these in, now they're DOT's culverts, they own them, they actually repaint them and replace them. So they, if they have a structure management technique for them too, and have specific sizing, and they will have tries if they need to.
Do they do, so then they do have to maintain the ones on the driveway that are in the road?
Yep, yeah, those are, those are.
And now they gotta do the ditches.
So, yeah, so when DOT issues a permit for a culvert in there right of way, it gives us permission to install it. They tell us how long it can be and what size it is. Once we put it in there, it's DOT's culvert.
Same with the town.
Okay.
When you put a culvert in, your driveway goes to a town road, once you put it in, it belongs to the town.
So DOT maintains the ditches, they maintain the culverts, it's not private property.
I knew they did the, I knew they did the ditching.
You want all that town road?
It's the one right on.
Oh, I thought you meant on your road.
Yeah, so like, if you're on a private HOA road, and then you've got driveways, like, those are all private.
No, I'm talking about the one. Yeah, it's totally clogged up.
Okay.
So they, so can we make more of a reference? Because the more I think about it, I think it justifies, and it's not his chapter listed that we talked about referencing where, where Lucy's driveway was, but maybe I'm just stretching on that.
I don't know that you need to do that on his.
Well, we were, we were trying to figure out initially at the very first meeting, and then we figured out where at the sidewalk, but her driveway entrance is.
Is right here?
Is right here. And we talked about putting that on here, but you can't put that on here, we don't.
No.
That's to make sure that the distance from whatever is going on, you know, with her well, it is the appropriate amount of distance, because it could.
Yeah.
That's where we were talking about that. And so in that discussion, we were trying to figure out initially where it was, and we know it's across from this town. No.
I mean, we can't change any regulations, but we can make sure they're followed.
But isn't it across from Lot Three?
And we certainly have to make sure, so when we do an AHG two hundred for a separate design on Lot Two and Lot Three, like, we have to maintain separations from offside lots, so we have to identify.
What is the nature of that separation?
It's a hundred feet, if you're less than a thousand gallons per day.
I thought it was a hundred fifty.
There is a clause in there on the six.
And because Lucy's butter letter referenced soils and water, could you speak to that? So you provided a bunch of geology hydraulics from wells and this whole packet, could you speak, just speak to that?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, and that wasn't intended to be an all-inclusive list of every well that was in the area, but the state maintains a database of wells on a voluntary basis, so when people drill a well, they can output the information. And it's helpful to them to be able to figure out if there's gonna be issues with wells. And as expected, there's variations, you know, different depths, different yields, all throughout.
House next to the jet?
Yeah, it's all different, different amounts of casing. So we kind of compiled as much information as we could in a reasonable radius and put it all together in that report, so that we could kind of see the full gamut of, you know, how many gallons per minute, what's the depth, what's the yield. So, you know, based on that information, we didn't feel that it was gonna be burdensome to try and find wells, you know, locations for wells on these properties. The subdivisions that are around us have wells on them, that we put on trailer recently. It's just a situation of if you have to repeat, you know.
And all the wells will have to be in the back of the property.
What's a thousand gallons, how many bedrooms is that usually?
Seven.
A thousand gallons of what, septic?
Water a day.
Thousand gallons, it's ninety gallons per day per bedroom.
You'd think I'd remember this, I used to sell real estate.
Yeah, so, so a three-bedroom house is two hundred and seventy gallons.
Of, of, that's how much it's gonna use, not, not sure.
That's the design for, for the leach field. So, so it's, and it's a factored flow, it's not saying that leach field's gonna see two hundred and seventy gallons every day. It's based on peaking, you know, if, you know, morning showers and.
I always thought it was based on the number of bedrooms.
Ninety gallons per day per bedroom.
Is there any limit to bed, how many bedrooms they can put in, or anything on these homes?
No, I mean, if, if somebody, if you were to go over a thousand gallons per day, now you have to be two hundred feet from a well.
And is there any difference on a dug versus a drilled well? Do you have to be further from a dug?
No, no, any, any one, it's basically a private water source well, whether it's dug or drilled, it's the same setback.
And there's nothing in the deed, there's no, nothing in the deeds that say X amount square footage or.
You're not proposing that in your sales.
We're not proposing to restrict the number of bedrooms per, that they have to have a septic system on the property that's.
Are you gonna restrict it, so it's no rentals, like the Airbnb's?
We can't do that.
No, you can't, it is covenants.
But he's not creating.
Just in a way that we can dictate him.
I, I honestly haven't decided yet on covenants before we sell these lots, because there's, I mean, I, I honestly don't know. I think, you know, we've got restrictions on the plans, which say the wells have to be a hundred and fifty feet back from the road or whatever.
And the wells have to.
The wells all have to be in the back, the septic in the front yards, and.
It's just typically, typically, a house is built at that ninety gallons or whatever, and then four bedrooms, and then they go in.
Yeah, we see that.
There is a new thing with the state, I believe, don't quote me, you can research it, but site evaluators now, when they go out to do a septic, and Dustin may know more, I'm just digging into the stuff, that they do ask if it is going to be a planned Airbnb, and if it is, then I believe they plan on extra size. I just got one the other day, it was the first form that I saw, that said, it's not going to be a rental. I don't know if somebody has to divulge that or not, I don't know the logistics, but I do know that it's in the works that site evaluators can ask.
Yeah, they're always updating the abandoned water disposal.
Yeah, that's in the works.
I think it's twenty fifteen, maybe the ones you're going with now, but, but, yeah, they're always updating them based on information like that.
So they are outstaying now, as far as.
Because it, because three bedrooms, where you've got three king-size beds, is a lot different than three bedrooms. Each bedroom has two hundred.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's not in our purview. I mean, Courtney's gonna be dealing with this stuff, it's got to do with compliance and how Beth, you know, Bethel could do better with the rentals and stuff, and which is not there yet, but it's nothing that we, that's nothing actionable for us on that. But I wanted to ask Lucy, did you have any questions?
I do, and this probably isn't the right time for it, but say in a butter, wanted to buy a couple of those lots, and not put a driveway, and not put a well, and not put a house on it, would that be possible?
Yeah, I mean, the lots don't have to be developed, I mean, if somebody wanted to buy them and.
And they wouldn't be part of the homeowners association.
You can buy all five of them.
There is no, there is no.
I mean, they, they would not later become part of a.
Nope, yeah, so when these lots are sold, they will not be, there's not gonna be language added that says that you're part of an HOA, or, because it's, you have access to a, you know, state road, and there's, there's no common shared stuff, so.
If it, if it has a single road going up there, one road going in and then split that way, then it would be.
That's an ideal situation.
So I am interested in the lots across from my house.
So the only, the only other thing that I, my only other two cents is, I would like to see a condition that the abandoned well is actually filled in.
One of my two.
Because I've dealt with people, and you know, it's falling in.
Okay.
Abandoned is just walk away from, and then you got a twenty-foot hole plus.
Yeah.
I mean, right now, it's, it's up out of the ground this tall with a big concrete cover on.
I had to deal with one a few years ago where the dog jumped up on it and fell in through the board that they had covering it, and nobody knew.
But oftentimes, people like to save those if they do like a lot of gardening and.
Well, they can take the tiles, but it's.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna have plenty of excavated material when we dig out for the cisterns, I can fill in the well.
Well, if he wants to keep it, can't he say he maintains it?
Safely.
Yeah, safely, if you wanna keep it. I mean.
Well, it's already, it's already.
I haven't evaluated yet whether it's useful or not, and.
Because you've got it in here, it's, it's currently not in use and proposed to be banned.
So, all right.
So we have to either, so if it stays, then we have to respect it for setback purposes, for septic system and all that, so it becomes kind of a.
Oh, yeah, that's.
An issue right in the middle of the front yard, so that, that's the main reason why I was thinking of getting rid of it, because it's kind of in the way.
You can't move with that other box. Oh, no, that's the, that's the test pit, that's right.
Yeah, yeah, that's where we're proposing.
One of those little boxes next to the big boxes to the.
Probably like a jack russ.
Oh, okay, great.
Can we move on to the finding the back?
Sure.
Lucy, you still good?
Going way, going way beyond our jurisdiction here on some.
I know.
Where do we land on the paved driveway? Is that gonna be higher?
Uh, we can do that.
Well, we can do that as a condition of approval at the end, and.
If everyone agrees.
In my opinion, I think, and I think you're part of that scenario in agreeing, if you don't find that egregious, I think it might be.
Yeah, I mean, I'll leave it up to your discretion if you're worried that it'll set some sort of precedent going forward and you don't wanna do it, and.
But I have a question about this now, so let's say Lucy buys two lots across the street from you, I don't think she should have to put in.
Developed lots.
Right, she should do anything to.
Culverts don't need to be built, but.
Or she doesn't need to put that paved.
If there's no driveway.
No tree has to be cut or anything.
It will be undeveloped, that's, I think you're right, developed.
They could be sold in the future.
Right, so we, we put that word in.
Which finding a back, are we gonna use?
The newest one.
This one that's.
It doesn't have a date on the top of it?
Not the one six seventeen.
The other one.
The one that has no date.
One has no date, and Emma's gonna refill in the part of it.
Yeah, we could, we have everything done.
You have to put a date on it.
All right, so let's go right to page one. Everybody good with page one?
Let's go back to page two.
Do you need a copy?
The language on four, where we say future dirt work, can we change dirt work to dust management practices for erosion and sedimentation?
Right. Is that as close to the river, close to wells?
You got that, Emma?
Traffic, sewage. Traffic, sewage, aesthetics.
Everybody good with page two?
Each subdivision lot must contract with a private solid waste disposal company when a building permit is issued for new construction. It's under municipal solid waste disposal.
I love it.
That's for, for construction.
For that. All right, three. So how far is this to the river?
Twelve, five hundred feet.
So I'm just looking at that top one, surface waters.
Yeah.
I mean, it is, it is.
I did include a flood map in the packets here. I mean, so it's five hundred feet to the water, like right when you get to the water's edge, there's about a forty foot.
Very.
But it's, it's, no, you're going to have a report, I don't need to do anything.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're taking care of, you know, the river too.
Well, so, I know we talked about this before, but when it, under fifteen, when it says there's no river streams or brooks.
Does that have to be consistently running? Because I mean, you, that one between those two parking lots was pretty.
They run the one, the one opposite Rinaldi and the one between me and the one run all the way.
No one on the one that, we were out there on a cycle.
Which one?
There wasn't, there wasn't one on the first one close to your side, but the other one had water running. And the ditch, I.
The one on the other side of Rinaldi, yeah.
I stepped down in the ditch and there was four inches of running water in it, well, not running, standing water.
I was just standing across the public.
See, I'm sure she's looking at lot one and two, and I didn't see any, any running water down there in one and two at all. Well, that, that, the one on the far end of lot one runs all the time, I remember.
I admit I haven't been down there every day, but that one has a big.
The one that's, that's off, that runs basically right off the side of lot one and comes like this, that one, that one flows.
Year round?
Yeah, so that's.
Is there a name for it?
I don't think it has to have a name to.
So the language is not.
No, no, but it is.
Yeah, it's the language.
It's the, it's.
It's whether it's a stream or a brook.
Describe it as an unnamed, is it a runoff, is it a stream?
Yeah, but it's off the property anyway, it kind of, it runs along the property a lot, but it's not on our lot.
But does it say to butt it?
Well, it says anything within two hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah, I mean, we could just make a mention that it's there.
That would just, that would make me feel that it would just mention.
Okay, there, because it says there are no rivers, streams or brooks. You could say it's.
It was noted that there is.
An unnamed stream abuts lot one, something like that, Emma?
Yeah, interment.
Interment, that's good. That abuts lot one. But say unnamed. Okay, so that's.
So it needed to fix that on fifteen also, so number ten and fifteen.
Number ten?
Excuse me, hold on, well, well, ten talks about anything within two hundred and fifty feet.
Ten of what?
Number ten. No, ten on page three.
Oh, sorry.
Very top where we started this whole discussion.
Oh, okay.
Right, that's where.
Wetland, pond, lake, river, but then down to fifteen.
It doesn't mention two hundred and fifty though.
No.
Yeah, but it, it tells in number ten, it's just, it's just not going to affect that, because it's, it's not, it's not on the property.
It's, yeah, I mean, this is.
No, we know it's not on, it's running, but it's within the two hundred and fifty feet of the property.
No, it's within two hundred and fifty feet of any wetland, pond, lake, river, which is not the case.
No, so ten would not be applicable.
Okay, so it's very defined.
I see what you're saying, ten is right, fifteen is.
Just add that, I mean, it's just.
So are we going on to four?
Yes. We get a lot like phosphorus. Was, I think it's an equation, how is it? How about page five?
Now, you talked about an easement, and I have a question, I have a question on this. Easements across lots shall be provided where necessary for utility or drainage. And I'll, it says met, and it says easements will be provided where necessary, but you have a proposal for an easement on lot.
Lot two.
Two.
Yeah, there's a drainage unit that runs through that. And when we convey the deed, we'll define.
So easements will be.
Lot one, it goes through a corner of lot one.
One and two, doesn't it?
Yeah, it's one and two.
There is a proposed drainage easement.
Okay.
Partially on one and two.
There's also an access easement on lot six.
And an access, this is very important that we have this.
And also the fire cistern easement on lot six.
Okay, look at that, we have, thank you for your help. It's for the cistern, did you get all that, Emma? Good, thanks. Okay, for. Streets or roads are being repulsed, particular access.
Additional improvements.
Okay, that's open, additional improvements, number thirteen on page five. The planning board may require additional improvements such as the insulation of sidewalks, curbs and gutters. Any improvements thus required is to be stated in writing in the minutes of the planning board with a reasoning on which the improvement was justified set forth.
We could deal with the apron paving at this point and, you know.
That would be a good place, I guess.
On developed lots.
Is that standard in the code?
We are allowed to request additional improvements.
Yeah, okay, I'll vote against that.
I, I know that.
But what you're doing is you're putting an extra burden on the landowner.
Well, in this case.
Put on, it would get put on the other potential buyer.
Well, I said the landowner, and if, if, if he just, if she buys two lots.
A developed lots.
Developed lots.
She doesn't develop them, anybody who doesn't develop them.
Now, now, the other question is, if you do it on this particular subdivision, have you done it on the other subdivision that you approved?
Well, this is a point of where we don't necessarily see eye to eye about. No, I mean, I feel, and I made the recommendation because I felt in this subdivision, with those slope of the land, the amount of water I've been told that runs off of this, that it would be advisable to make sure that stuff doesn't shift to the public road. And you can vote against it because you don't feel it's necessary.
We can't change what another board did, and just because somebody else didn't.
Hopefully, we're always improving ourselves.
And I'll make it easy because we're agreeing to it.
Yes, yes.
And, and we've only had one other place where we had subdivision road driveways coming off a main road, and that was route five, and those all data.
And I think it's just, I think it's very, I think it's very about it.
It's not a one size fits all issue with subdivisions, it's just, there's concern about this washout into the.
Part of the early control plan to maybe.
Yeah.
So how do you want to, how do you want to state that there for additional improvements?
Twenty foot?
How did you write that, Emma, when we were talking about it being a condition of approval on the paved aprons?
I just put twenty foot paved apron requirement, or required that homeowner be responsible.
For developed, for lots that are being developed as those lots, yeah.
You might want to have it say twenty foot length too, so someone doesn't confuse it.
Yes, because they've already determined, the M D F T determines the width.
Right, right. Yeah, that would be good, can you, can just, can you add that to number thirteen instead of a C O A?
And the reason for that, Emma, is to prevent washout and erosion onto the public road.
Now, how do I do this if, I know Bob, do you, should we take a vote on just that one? Because I know Bob does not, so let's do that. We should take, yeah, okay, so let's, let's, I want to.
I'll make a motion that we, on number thirteen, additional improvements, we add language requiring that developed house lots will be required to have a twenty foot length paved apron.
Okay, do I have a second? All in favor? All opposed?
Well, my concern is you're rewriting the code, and you don't have the authority to rewrite the code. And then, I mean, just requiring, will that be like, like two inches of binder pavement?
Oh, gosh.
It is normally just, it's just a binder.
I mean, that's what, paving companies know what they do.
They not.
Wow, you'd be surprised, people will come in and say, I'm going to do an inch of surface.
Yeah, you're right, and just look at our main roads.
Yeah.
Okay.
I want anyone getting away with anything.
So, so two, two inch, twenty foot.
All right, are we ready for number six?
Yep.
Store buildings.
What size were the lots, acre? Probably an acre, forty thousand and change. Lot six is a little bigger.
Okay, everybody good with page six? Page seven, number twenty six, we have the fire chief.
And we are adding a condition of approval that the developer provide a as-built letter regarding the ultimate size of the cistern that is put in place.
Okay.
For, for the file.
Because, because he's a.
There's some approval.
That was just good to have accurate.
Was that the information?
Yes.
Well, it's nice because we don't fill one, we sit there and take a guess, we can't remember.
Well, it's also, you know.
Only C O A we have?
Because we moved the other one to number thirteen.
All right.
Do we want it?
The road access, you moved somewhere.
Do we want to, do you want to take a message?
No, no, the maintenance agreement, thank you Lucy, the maintenance agreement on the Rinaldi, so the developer.
Oh, yes.
Will be required to submit a letter acknowledging responsibility of winter maintenance? No.
No, not winter.
Year round maintenance.
Year round maintenance, sorry, of the, of Rinaldi road?
No, to the cisterns, to the cisterns.
How am I going to react with it, with the town crew?
Excuse me?
How is that going to come to react? Town crew, because the town crew maintains that road up to a certain point, only during the summer.
And I'll name this on a hundred.
Okay, so.
Hundred fifty.
So that's what they have to figure out, and that's a condition of approval that he works with, Amy, Mike, Joe, Drew and Scott, to figure out what that management or that maintenance agreement is going to look like. And we're just asking for that agreement to be in the file.
Yes, that needs to be, whatever the agreement is, it needs to be filed.
Right.
And what would happen is that responsibility will be on me until, like, if at some point in the future there is some H O A or something over Rinaldi Road, that might get assigned to them, but for now. But that's not what we're asking for, we're asking for your agreement, when you get your agreement in writing to the planning board.
Yeah, yeah, we'll take that agreement, we'll read it into the record and we'll add it to the file. But you can draw, that's something you can drop off with Emma, you don't need to come.
And that needs to be.
That's a condition of approval.
A condition of approval.
Do, do we want to, and I don't carry it away, but do we want to say anything about, what we talked about about filling in abandoned well?
Well, it says will be abandoned, are there standards, common standards for abandoning, abandoning a well?
I, I don't know, but knowing personally, dealing with situations, I would like to see it filled.
I could tell that it's an abandoned well right now, it's been there twenty years.
Yeah, I mean, I went and filled one in because of what happened.
Really?
We're going to fill, yeah, we'll fill it in because I don't, I don't want the responsibility of selling lot five to somebody and then ending up with this well.
If you're just going to take care of it, that's fine.
Yeah.
I, we don't need to make it a condition. Or, I mean, if we wanted to, we could put in an additional.
I mean, I suppose, oh, well, no, you can't, the well can't be utilized there because the test pit's there, so it has.
Well, the, the actual active well for the house has to be behind the well line.
So I would, I would feel comfortable if we added that back on additional improvements. And that way it's just documented that it's covered.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
So Jim would like to add that the abandoned well is filled in as a condition of approval?
No, no, I don't think it needs to be a condition. I think it can get put in with additional improvements.
Okay.
So are you okay with that? You don't think you'll ever want that well for any purposes?
No, I mean, right now the water line from that well goes into the house on lot six, so we're going to have to.
Get rid of it anyway.
Yeah, because I don't want a well on lot five that serves lots.
That's, that's a nightmare.
Unless you guys think it should be in the condition, I don't care.
No, we just want to put that.
Well, it either goes under a condition or it goes under additional improvements.
Okay, did you get that, Emma?
I don't get, I don't care which one.
Emma's got it, we'll put it under additional improvements because that's, it's going to be a quick, a quick fix.
Yeah.
All right.
And that way, that way it's covered, and it covered here, down, down the road, it's going to be.
Yeah, it'll be part of.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the findings of fact with the added conditions of approval and added notes under additional improvements.
And.
Would anybody like just?
One second.
Okay, all in favor?
Awesome.
Are you voting opposed? You're opposed?
A lot of folks because of that one.
Well, we did, we did put that in the record that you're opposed to that.
That standard.
That standard. That's what we voted on separately, so you could be, okay, okay.
So now we need to approve the, of the whole thing?
Yep, the subdivision plan.
I'll make a motion, we approve the subdivision plan for Rinaldi Ridge with the additional changes and conditions.
Okay, so would I, does that get second? All in favor? Great, so we're going to sign. Do you want your plot of reference? Oh, here, right here?
No, I did bring a couple that I have not stamped yet, because I have to wet stamp them.
Let's make sure what we signed, is this the newest one?
These two are the newest ones, this is the one.
I'm going to give you one that.
This is what you have to sign.
So this is my electronic stamp, I have to actually wet stamp it to put it in the registry, so.
So we can't.
No, you can sign it, I'm just going to, I brought some that don't have my stamp on it. So then, after you sign it, I can just.
Are you an engineer?
I'm an engineer, and then we're going to have.
Are you the owner of this project?
Yeah. Bill Piffen is the land surveyor.
Say again?
Storage area is done.
Signed it.
They're rolling it right now.
We can sign it as.
Yeah, but can we sign it if he hasn't stamped it?
Yeah, why would you not be able to sign it?
I don't know, that's what I'm asking.
What ends up happening is because we have to wet stamp it.
You have to do it for the registry.
Yeah, but like, when I bring it to the registry, they're not going to record it on stamp plan, and not, but like, it could all have to be wet signatures.
We still.
To record it.
So do we sign this one or?
I'm going to give you one.
Okay.
Because I'm curious.
You're welcome to sign one that has a stamp on it if you want, but if you want to keep one, you want it off the registry.
That's how we do it.
Cause now we need to have a sign.
Yeah.
Either there or there, man.
Who's your store?
Yeah, well, did you give them that up?
I gave attention.
Emma, we'll see that they are done, uh, Jessica is heading on vacation, she's the one that does that, so it may be a couple weeks.
You don't have to, you look at the piece of paper I gave Emma, that's Jessica's writing and she did that about two months ago, so.
Well, I'm just getting out of ways.
I think tomorrow was her last day in the office, so she's on call.
Some housekeeping on our side, yeah. When do you do, um-
So that will be probably come next year, because we're still working on, we, we don't even commit tasks until September, October, so all of our April first previous from last year has been done. So he won't even look at that until next year.
Hello?
I can-
Well, they don't have to be done in here, they can be done in out.
He can look at it and he can tell you what you have in law that's-
All right, second, everyone.
That, but it won't show on any task log.
Cause we're at the inner block.
Um, yeah, well, and then, um, yeah, let me just show her how this room came up real quick. Addresses will be assigned as soon as a building permit is pulled for individual lots, uh, building, plumbing and septic.
Is it, cause lot six will stay?
I just hit the stop, yes, I hit stop.